The Freedom Fighting Parents of Clarksville on upcoming school board vote dealing with the mask mandates of their children. So four parents are getting ready to voice their minds when it comes to the decisions that are directly affecting their children. Let's find out what they have to say about that decision and what will happen if they do not accomplish their mission. That's now on the Joe Padula Show, absolutely.
It's the Joe Padula Show, Clarksville's conversation.
Absolutely. Yes, okay, so make sure to subscribe, hit that notification bell, click the like, leave your comments, and definitely help us out by sharing this video in your timelines or groups. But yes, okay, and whether for or against masking children. If you'd like to publicly state why at the school board vote on Tuesday, September 14th, in this video description is the link to do so. So tag and share with those who are looking to get involved. Also is the website for the Freedom Fighting Parents of Clarksville. Go check that out, boom, see what they have to say. What's up, Casey?
Hi.
It's good to see you again.
Yes, you too.
Becky!
Hey!
Always a pleasure to have you in front of a microphone. Said nobody ever.
Actually, a lot of people say that.
No, of course, you're doing great. It's okay that you're wearing two different earrings.
Yeah, you weren't supposed to tell anybody.
Sorry, my bad.
Are you really?
What's up, Shawnee?
Way to out a girl.
I know.
Shawnee, it's good to see you. We would've got it started earlier, but you blamed the funeral for not being here.
I did, it was bad, I'm sorry.
It's all right. And Doc Dale Brown, how are you?
How you doing?
Good to see you again. It's nice to have some testosterone in here.
I've been taking my nettle, too.
Oh, okay, good deal.
Freeze it up.
All right, so again, my mission, personal mission here, is to create awareness for people, whether you're for or against the masking of children, to attend this meeting in Clarksville, Tennessee on Tuesday. So the agenda, Becky, the agenda was just released, is that correct?
Correct.
From the school board?
Literally minutes ago, like breaking news.
So we're gonna find out what is...
Yes.
All right, let's break that down.
Okay, so the school board agenda was, we literally checked an hour ago, so it's in the last hour it came out. They will be talking about two key things. One is a change in the public participation policy that the school board has. And then the other one is COVID-19 safety protocols.
What is the public participation policy currently?
So the public...
Or what was it, if you said they changed it?
Well, they want to change it, they're proposing it. The study session this week, they talked about possible changes, they presented them. So as it stands right now, and as it will stand even on Tuesday, so if you're using the link in the description, this will be, it is how it stands right now.
Okay.
So you can talk about this, and I encourage everyone, you can talk about multiple subjects. You can request to speak on many things. One person can speak multiple times on different subjects.
But they have to have that submitted, that piece of paper, that link?
And they have to have it approved, that's the kicker, is they have to...
We'll get there, Shawnee, hold on, we're gonna get there.
Stay tuned, there's the tease, right there. And it has to, it has to be submitted 24 hours before the beginning of the...
Now you're jumping ahead, too.
No, it's just a question.
Yeah, no, it is 24 hours right now. So that's one of the changes they wanna make is, right now, the way it stands is you get five minutes, you have to submit the form. It has to be on an agenda item. Luckily, this is an agenda item, and so is the COVID-19 safety protocols, two hot topics. They're both on the agenda, which by the way, COVID has never been on the agenda until today.
Really?
Yes, fun fact.
They say it's always on the agenda, but it's never actually on the agenda.
It's never been printed.
It's about as clear as mud.
You've never been able to speak about it because it's never been on the agenda to speak about.
I believe they wrote it in white.
Oh, oh, it was on white paper?
It was white paper, whitey.
Just couldn't see it.
It was on the agenda, it's right there.
Yeah, so, yes, so a couple of the changes that they are proposing to the policy are, one is the non-elected attorney of the school board is the one who approves if you can speak or not. So an unelected official. They wanna change it from 24 hours notice to 72 hours notice. The problem we have with this is today, they just released the agenda today. Barely 70, it's not even 72 hours ahead of time.
Right, so say these rules were applying for this one...
You wouldn't have even been able to submit it.
They just released the agenda moments ago from the beginning of this broadcasting.
Yes.
And the meeting is Tuesday, 72 hours is the, will be the new rule. So if they release the agenda again at this time for the next meeting, nobody, it's too late to submit.
And they never...
To speak in front.
I could be wrong.
No, because they're supposedly saying that they can discuss anything of concern.
Well, that's the other thing.
Possibly on anything of concern, doesn't necessarily have to be on the agenda, that is the hearsay right now.
Okay.
Right.
So...
So the other thing is, is that this was, we were also gonna change it from a study, they wanna move it from the school board meetings to the study sessions. So the study session that happened on Tuesday, unless it changed when this came out, as of an hour ago, there still was no meeting notes or agenda from this last Tuesday's meeting.
Tell people the difference between a school board meeting and a study session. Cause I bet we have a bunch of people that are tuning in that have no idea what we're talking about.
I have no idea.
Right, the difference between a school board meeting and a study session. A study session is theoretically just to give them an opportunity to collect information. And what I find interesting in my experience, being on boards and being involved in this process for decades now, in other areas, it is a requirement that they allow people to comment before and after all meetings, all the time. Regardless, you do not have to submit your request to talk, you do not have to let them know beforehand so that they can determine whether or not what you wanna say is appropriate or not. And in Nevada, that's a state law, it's a requirement. If they don't do it, they are out of compliance and they can get fined for it. And people have lost their jobs over it.
I can understand a school board wanting to know how many people want to speak in order for time management.
But they're eliminating it.
Yeah, but not capping it.
Right, and not only not capping it, but not giving you carte blanche opportunity to say what you need to say. Because you might not, they might not agree with what you say, and they can say, "That's cool, we don't agree with you, so we're just not gonna give you that opportunity to talk."
There's no discussion between the public comment individual and the board. You can't ask questions of them?
No.
They can, they do not have the response.
And that's not that uncommon.
They can just sit there, look blankly, and then do nothing about it.
I'm not opposed to that either.
Right, that's not uncommon, but the problem is, is it's the stifling of all information that is perceived as whatever they wanna perceive it as. If they wanna perceive it as, "This is an abusive speech because we don't like the fact that you're addressing us in a way that we don't appreciate it."
Shawnee, you still haven't described the difference.
Oh, sorry, sorry, totally. So the difference is in... Sorry, Casey, thank you, keep me on track. The difference is, is a study session is just an opportunity to get information. An actual board meeting is the opportunity to vote. And in neither of these scenarios in our school district is there very much dialogue on behalf of the board whatsoever. They don't ask questions. The last agenda meeting they had, or the last study session that they had, they talked about the academic deficiency that has been created by COVID. There was one question.
But this Tuesday is an actual, not a study session, but an actual board meeting with speaking and voting that will be taking place.
Yes.
Uh, let's, for this Tuesday, Becky, let's go to the actual timeline of the meeting. Okay, first of all, where do people go? Casey, do you know exactly the address there?
621 Gracie Avenue is the address. It's close to downtown.
Okay, so it is in the downtown Clarksville area. All right, and parking wise, do we know anything about this?
Hopefully we run out of parking.
I bet, I bet we will.
Get there early, cause we're hoping to have a turnout.
So what we are proposing is that everyone, so the school board meeting starts at 6:00 PM sharp, and they do start on time, you guys.
They do.
And I am a perpetual late person, so I always tell myself I'm gonna be there at 5:30. But in this case, I highly recommend we get there at 5:00, we meet in the parking lot, we have a little rally of sorts in the parking lot.
Social gathering within the city.
Social gathering, yes.
Yeah, sorry, I don't wanna, I don't wanna trigger anybody. Okay, so social gathering in the parking lot beforehand, and...
What would you guys talk about during your gathering? What, you know, prior to?
Well, Casey's gonna have the microphone.
I'm not having a microphone. I usually pray, honestly, I pray before Oliver, Oliver, the time, probably you're tired of that, but...
No, we will be praying for it.
Before we go in, we'll pray over it. We'll probably just talk about, a lot of people, I think, are intimidated maybe by being there cause they've never experienced it, or don't know what to experience, so probably just giving them an overview and with the school board. I think a lot of people actually are usually disappointed, honestly, when they go into a school board meeting because they see all of these crazy things happen online.
They see these cut-out clips of just moments of emotion, right.
Yeah, and like 90% of the school board meeting is literally us just like sitting there listening to them talk.
But why is it important to show up? Even if you don't plan on speaking, why is it important to show up?
Because I think they need to see that we are wanting to have a voice, we are wanting, we are watching them. And I don't mean that in a mean way, like, like we are watching them, we are watching what they are doing, we are watching what they are making choices for our children. And here's the reality, is there's 34,000 kids in this district, in the school district. Last study session, there was eight parents there and five police officers. You can't tell me...
That's an excessive use of force.
Well, yes, but I think it's...
I think it's an excessive waste of funding.
How did they think, why did they think that was necessary? Like that, I would like a report on why they thought that was necessary.
It's bullying, it's they're intentionally trying to bully parents.
Who puts in that request for that many?
The Sheriff's Department, I asked, I called the Sheriff's Department, and the captain told me that he makes that decision based on what he feels is gonna be appropriate for security.
Based on what he saw on Facebook?
Probably based on me yelling, yes.
Oh my gosh.
I am really scary, and we need five cops. So, but the whole point is, is that there's 34,000 kids...
Someone should call the Fashion Police on her, look at that shawl. I'm sorry, go on.
You are mean to her today!
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, please continue.
So, my point is, we should have hundreds, if not thousands, of parents there.
Absolutely.
And this is one day that we are asking for you to show up for your kids, and I don't care what side you're on. Dale and I have, and all of us had this conversation the other day, we don't care what side you're on. I care that you are there having a voice for your children because these are your children. They are not the school district's children, they are your children. And the only way we're gonna have our rights back, and the only way we're gonna have a participation in our kids' education is if we start showing up and talking to the school board and telling them how we feel.
Absolutely, and I'm gonna take that and run with it a little bit, too. It's not just this issue, it's not just, it's not just when you're mad. Seriously, I, for years, have been the only person sitting in school board meetings when I was an attendee because parents don't traditionally go. And I've had multiple people on the board even say, "Well, this is the first time we've had this many people show up." When we have 34,000 kids in our school district, our job as parents is to advocate for our kids. Our job as parents is to be actively engaged and actively involved. If you are not in these meetings, you have no idea what it is that's happening.
Why, why, why the autopilot for so many years?
Because it's super easy to just disengage and allow your kids to be taken over and say...
I can relate to that 100%. Cause we all got baseball, and you've got soccer, and you've got ukulele, and you've got work, and you've got all of the other things, and you don't think that it's... My daughter does, and she's really good at it.
I know, I'm kidding.
Um, but yeah, you have all these other things, and then you feel like, "Oh, what's the importance of..." "I'm not gonna make a difference, it doesn't matter if I show up," and that's how I was for a really long time.
I think the other piece is that we had a, like, I had a fairly normal education. I feel like we were probably one of the last generations to have a normal education for the most part. So we assume it's as we were when we were kids, and it's not. I mean, it, it's not at all, looking at my son's curriculum over the last week, they are wildly different than the education we had. So you have to be engaged in knowing what is happening and not trust...
Dan Shaw comments, okay, they've been working on taking power away from parents regarding their children's education for the last 50 years.
Yes, they have, especially in more, I came from an incredibly liberal school district, and I'll tell you, school is no longer in the business of education, it's in the business of social services. And anybody that is in education that is gonna be honest with you will tell you that. And that's a huge problem because we no longer are about educating our kids, we're about providing social services.
I think case in point is our numbers. When we have 14% of kids on track for algebra, 14%,
Yeah.
that's like, that's freshman algebra.
Doc, why, I don't, I don't, I don't understand that, but I don't really care for it, and that's just me personally. When I hear teachers and school board members saying "our children," do you ever, do you ever catch that?
Yeah.
When they're talking about like your kids...
Yeah.
I just...
The children, these children, your children, they should.
Am I overlooking it?
No, I mean, it is, it's a assumed possession, I would say, that it could be. Um, there is the, you know, like, I'm a Christian, I could say my brothers and sisters, you may not be like my biological earthly brother, but you're my brother, you're my bro, you know?
Yeah.
And so who knows exactly where they're...
If that's what I identify as.
Well, and I'm not, and I will say...
You're my non-binary.
Those cultural, those emotional connections that our teachers have with our, our children, that's not a bad thing, that's a good thing.
Agreed.
And they definitely need to cultivate that. But they also, education that's successful is a three-legged duel, and I've said this multiple times in this show. Parents are a leg, school is a leg, the kids are a leg. If one of those legs ceases to function, the whole thing will come toppling down. The school district is, is making...
They sawed off our leg.
They, well, they're just sawing off, yeah, the parent leg, they're just getting rid of it.
And the kid leg, too, actually.
They really are.
You'll know them by their fruits, and if they truly care and love our children, then they should be listening to the parents.
They should want, they should be asking us.
Who are raising those children, who are more concerned than anyone else for the life and health of those children.
And I do want to say there's a lot of people in this district that do that. We have a lot of administrators that are really good, and a lot of teachers that are really good.
When I was in school, the, the chance of having a young teacher was very rare. We had, it was a lot of older, experienced individuals, mostly females, as our school teachers and our school admins.
Right.
I see a trend that is so young right now, okay, where teachers are very young, not a lot of life experience.
And no concept on what it's like to be a parent, so how can they relate?
Right, and they, and most of them don't, of the youthful ones, do not have children.
Right, well, and then on top of that, Joe, what I realized this week with my son's education, I looked at his social studies class where he literally, the teacher grabbed the text out of the textbook, then she also basically highlighted for them, and then she made the note cards on the computer. She probably doesn't even realize that what we experienced in school was, we read the text, we pulled that out, we highlighted it, we wrote the note cards out, then we flashcard through everything because that was all a part of your learning process, and like, that's all cognitive stuff.
Yeah.
She probably has never even experienced that because she didn't experience that in school. So it's a whole gap of, they don't even know that there's this other way of educating that we're asking for, and they aren't delivering, and so we're like, "What's happening?"
There's a better way to inform and educate, and you look at multiple different countries around the world who have higher, like, you know, achievement in school and education and algebra and whatever else.
Right.
And they have a fraction of the hours spent in the classroom, they don't send homework home with their kids because they don't need it because of the level of education, the type of education, and they incorporate physical activity, which if we wanted to circle back to the idea that, you know, we need to protect our kids' health, you know, and that's kinda what we're going to be discussing the school board.
That's a good segue, Dale, look at you.
And the reality is, we are eliminating physical activity, and physical activity is well scientifically shown to improve cognitive capability, memory, memorization, cognitive performance.
What do you mean, they're eliminating?
They're just reducing, and now I think it's like one half hour, and then some now, some now, they're not allowing that physical activity because then there's a social interaction where kids can be within...
Do they not have the Presidential Fitness Challenge anymore?
Probably not.
I don't even know.
I have not heard anything about that for a long time.
I won that one year, by the way, 100%.
I want it like every year.
Every year, it was so easy.
Another thing is, we've got younger teachers that are younger and younger, and we've, our median age of school board trustees nationwide is about 65. So the people who are calling the shots aren't, they have no cognizant understanding of what education looks like in today's setting in comparison to what they went, it's completely different. So it's, it's all theoretical, and that's another huge part of the problem is we've got a lot of theoretical opinion-based...
But they don't even understand the thing, like, when I've brought the tech policy up to, all the way up to Dr. Huff and to other school board members, they don't even understand what I'm talking about. I don't mean that disrespectfully because I've had to learn this stuff, too. They, they don't even have a concept, so they're approving things that they truly don't have an understanding of, and they don't know the results that it's gonna bring.
Practical application, that's what I'm saying. And then their response is, "If you don't like it..." We've literally had multiple school district employees over the course of the last two months say, "Well, if you don't like it, you can take your kids somewhere else." That is a cultural problem that exists in this school district from the top on down. And if that is how our school board is allowing our school district employees to speak to our parents, we have a problem.
Yeah, I don't like the "love it or leave it" claim, you know what I mean?
Oh, every single, every single...
For any situation, you know what I mean?
Every single admin I talk to.
Right.
We're talking big people.
What about the school unions, okay, the, what is their connection to school board members?
It's a little different here, I feel, I come from Wisconsin where it's very present. I feel like here, it's not so much the union, honestly, unless I'm wrong.
They don't have showing teachers' unions here.
I've had a teacher tell me that there's members, I, again, this is hearsay, things like that could be way off, way wrong, but from what I've been told by somebody is that there is a strong connection with at least one school board member, with school unions. So, and that may be completely wrong, and I apologize if I'm repeating something that I have not validated, which I, I want to validate most things I say. And that should be a concern, too, because unions, and you look at the communication between the CDC and school unions, or teachers' unions, that...
No, I hear you, that's why...
They're manipulating things behind parents' backs, things like that.
I think it's more on the DL here.
Because the school, like what Doc Dale was just saying, the teachers' union, you know, as we saw recently in the, in the released documents, was, was very much pushing the CDC to form mask policy.
Right.
You know, and that is, now...
So we weren't following the science, we were following...
An influence.
Yes.
Agenda.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. So, okay, back to the agenda, I'm glad you said that word.
Agenda.
Okay, so, again, Tuesday is the, is the big meeting, they're gonna be voting on yay or nay for the...
Public participation that they already proposed, and I think you can see, I don't know if you can see it, actually, they had it at the study session, but, so to recap that, so the proposed changes on the public participation policy is, the non-elected attorney will approve if you can speak or not, you have to submit your request 72 hours in advance. It can be on anything as long as it's school-related. Um, it went down to three minutes instead of five minutes, and there is a 30-minute max now, which means 10 people out of tens of thousands of parents are only allowed to speak once a month at a study session.
Now, I mean, are you sure that's set in stone?
This is what they're voting yes or no on.
Okay, now, because, I mean, if you gotta, according to the timeline that we got up on the screen here, you got a 6:02 public conversation where five minutes per person, but it stops at 6:32, which is a half hour.
So they're jumping the gun and adding that 30-minute rule, they don't have that right now. They're adding it in, probably just thinking we don't notice things, but we do.
Yeah, but obviously, okay, well, before we go any further, okay, boom, it's your turn to speak, Becky, what are you saying?
Um, about this, I think...
To the school board?
Oh, to the school board?
Yeah.
We can't say, don't...
I can't tell you, then they're gonna be able to like, okay, this is, can I...
Why are you ashamed of what you have to say?
No, because I wanna surprise them, but...
Why, why surprise them?
Let me say something, let me say something.
Why be sneaky?
When it comes to our children's health, I think our children deserve more than three minutes of discussion.
Amen.
And it doesn't even allow for interaction between the parent commenting and the school board. We can't ask them questions, they are not going to respond, they don't have, they can do nothing, nothing. And that is unacceptable.
Five minutes?
Because if they wanna prove to me that they would care about my child if they were under their, you know, influence within the school system, then I believe my children deserve way more than three minutes when we're talking about the life, safety, and health of my child.
I hear you, Dale, but I'm in broadcasting, five minutes is a long time where people can just ramble and repeat, repeat, repeat.
I get it, I hear what you're saying.
No, I...
It gets very repetitive.
Okay, so where are the opportunities? I have had a teacher reach out to me and ask me to present the information and scientific evidence
Yeah.
on masks and other policies within the school, all right? So where's the opportunity for us to present information that has to do with what the school board is voting on?
You have to be on a committee, that's secret, and we don't have access to...
So we need to figure that out, and that's the thing is, we don't know who are making these decisions because we, we, the school board is not having discussions on the evidence science of masks. They are not having that discussion.
How can you get it?
Somebody else is making the recommendation, and then they are voting on, do we agree with this recommendation?
That this discussion where you're in front of the board turns into a discussion and not just a...
They have to be willing to have that conversation in front of the populace.
So how do you get that passed, though, so that it becomes part of the policy?
Probably higher attorneys.
Yeah.
I think, and John Dawson actually called for this, I think, in a, in a, in one of the newspapers, in a editorial, that he said, "Have a town hall." Why doesn't the school board call a town hall and allow for that?
Yes, exactly, right.
Allow for that, and I think...
And bring the five cops, you know?
Yeah, oh, you can bring all the cops, we love cops, but the public comment for me is, it's a way for the elected officials to be held accountable publicly. They always say to us, "You can email us, you can call us, you can whatever."
No, I hear you.
No.
I get into arguments with people on social media, "Come on the show, let's talk about it, nope."
Hey, last, last night, I gave all my references, resources, everything, and not a single comment back unless I actually...
And I think the other thing, the other thing is, is that they work for us, and so this is the piece that's really struggling.
I don't think they like hearing that.
Okay, but this is what I struggle with on the... We're gonna get to the mask thing in a second, so that, let's use that as an example and a segue. They're gonna talk about COVID safety protocols, correct? At this, and they're gonna vote on them. They, what they're doing is they're having the research come to them, they're evaluating it, they're doing all of that, and then they're deciding what's best for our kids. They have it backwards. Our job as parents is to go do the research, make the best decision for our children, and then tell them how we feel, and then they're supposed to represent us. They are not supposed to be making these decisions based off of what they're told from the experts. They're supposed to be making the decisions.
They're not experts.
We're the experts, we're the parents.
I hear you, okay.
They're political parties.
Can I say one thing, and then I have to go?
Yeah, 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 we all have to go actually, too.
So, just, just one thing really quick, and I think that all of this, our, our message kinda gets lost with all of this cause there's so many things, so many battles, but I just wanna say that the, this is, these are our two goals of our group, right? Is to create transparency and accountability. So it doesn't matter what you believe with the masks or the vaccines, or whether it even matters that we're there talking. That's the whole entire goal, why we're here on the Joe Padula Show, why we created our group, is for those two things.
Yes, and thank you, I was, I'm glad you brought that back around because our biggest, most important thing is to request parents to show up.
Yes.
Show up for your kids.
Tuesday.
Be, everybody, every parent in this community needs to show up for their children.
And here's the reality, they are gonna vote, they're gonna vote on what that, the COVID-19 safety protocol, what that really means is, are they gonna put masks on our kids or not?
All right, what if they vote yes? Then what do you do?
I'm pulling my kids. I'm homeschooling.
What if, real quick, before we go into that one, board election of chair, that's the first thing?
She probably stepped down because she hasn't been running the meetings. It was attorney running the meetings for a while, and then there was someone else that ran it, the co-chair.
Hold on, Casey, you're not done yet.
I have to go.
We're down, we're down to one minute.
Okay.
All right, we're down to one minute, which means like four, but...
Well, I really have to go.
I hear you, well, I'll tell you what, we, we all should get going. Uh, all right, so if they do vote yes, what's the plan? Becky, you're saying your kids are being pulled? But does that mean you're out of the discussion?
I wanna see their medical license.
No, 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 no.
I wanna see their medical license.
Go on, Dale.
I wanna see their medical license, because they are, they are basically voting on something that is up to a medical professional, because the reality is, you cannot make somebody do something that is for the prevention or treatment of disease.
That's right.
Unless you have a medical license, so how is the board going to vote on this, and especially when we have seen nothing of discussion or scientific studies? I have asked and will now have to go through a public request, public records request, for any scientific document that our board members have reviewed in relationship to mask effectiveness.
But they're just basing it on CDC is what they're gonna be saying.
Because we see no one died in Sweden, no child died, no teacher died in Sweden, and they did not have mask mandates, they did not wear masks.
So to answer your question, Joe, we are just getting started.
No, and we don't, and Casey homeschools her kids, I'll be joining her world of homeschooling but still fighting, because at the end of the day, we want what's best for all the kids. And Michael, I think it says Michael said on there, some of us are not in the position to pull our kids and homeschool, I honestly am not either.
My kids are homeschooled, and I'm fighting for your, Michael, I'm fighting for your children, we're fighting for your children.
But we need to be.
Let us know what you wanna.
Michael Hoover, he says, are you guys still complaining about the school board?
No, we're complaining about you, Michael Hoover, no, I'm just kidding.
Michael.
Wasn't he the guy that, I asked if he wanted to come on, he never responded.
Mike, yea or nay, you and Doc Dale.
Let's go.
Talk.
Okay, so Casey has to go, and we have to go, so, 5 o'clock, be in the, for our, what did we call it, civil gathering ahead of the school board meeting at 621 Gracie Avenue on Tuesday, and then 6:00 PM is the meeting, please, today, today, I would do it today, request to speak. Everybody should be speaking, we do not care what side of the argument you are on, everyone needs to be a voice for their child.
Hey, what do you think of it all, do your comments, the whole bits, make sure to subscribe, hit that notification bell, click the like, leave the comments, definitely help us out by sharing this video on your timelines or groups and tag anyone that you think needs to be involved. Alright, the Freedom Fighting Parents of Clarksville, their mission statement is dedicated to challenging failing systems while preserving and protecting the rights of families and children. Well, stay to check them out at freedomfightingcollective.com. Thanks for allowing us, enabling us to have a conversation here on the Joe Padula Show, absolutely.